Hello and welcome to The Right Idea where we discuss the people policy and politics that drive Texas. I'm your host, Brian Phillips. I'm the Chief Communications Officer at the Texas Public Policy Foundation. And with me as always is my co-host Derek Cohen, the Vice President of Policy here at TPPF. And with us today is our very, very special guest is Senator Brandon Creighton, who represents Senate District Four, where he was first elected in 2014 and now chairs the Senate Committee on Education, which of course is why we're here to talk to him today. Thank you Senator for being with us.
It's good to be here.
So before we get to that, and of course, we're going to jump into all things school choice because again Derek and I always joke that we're contractually obligated at TPPF to talk about school choice every seven minutes. But before we get to that, we are going to talk about some other things that are going on. And the special session is not only about, of course, ESAs. There are some other issues going on, so we'll let Derek do a quick update on that. But first, I want to give my shameless plug to all of our wonderful products that we have here at TPPF that some of our listeners and viewers may or may not know about. The one I always talk about, of course, is our weekly newsletter called The Post. It's a combination and collaboration of all the things that we're working on here at TPPF, all the topical issues. There's some exclusive content. I write an article at the beginning every week just for readers. We always have some kind of fun, cultural Texas stuff in there as well. So if you'd like to sign up for that, if you're not already signed up for that, you can do that at texaspolicy.com/the-post. And since we are talking about school choice today, our website, our hub for all of the things that are going on, plus a bunch of materials, videos, we've got ways to look up your members to find out whether they support school choice or not. You can find all of that at txparentsmatter.com. Again, that's txparentsmatter.com. Okay, now that's out of the way, let's jump right in Derek. If you could give us a few of the highlights from the past couple of weeks.
Absolutely. And you'll have to forgive me, I don't want to be presumptuous as explaining to the Senator what happened in the legislature. No, no. But just a couple of things, we have basically two items on the call that are approaching the Governor's Desk or very close to that. That is SB4, Flores and Guillen, that increased the stash house for operating a stash house. I remember that was added to the call, as well as SB7 from Senators Middleton and Representative Leach that banned COVID mandates. And so that was also an item added to this call. There are things that have passed the original chamber, several of which that we'll talk about here in this conversation coming up. Obviously SB1, one of the flagship items of legislation, but also SB2, which handled a lot of the funding aspect of that as well. We have HB4, which is now over in the Senate. This was the illegal entry bill from the House, Mr. Spillers picked up by Senator Birdwell. And that's set for hearing tomorrow, actually. We're recording this on Halloween, so that'll be on November 1st. And then we have HB6 by Representative Jutan, which of course is that 1.5 billion for border infrastructure funding.
All right. And just to give our listeners and viewers a little deeper dive into that, where does the debate stand on some of those issues? Are these, the stuff that you talked about, I mean, is progressing and is moving? And obviously, there's been some debate on some of these issues, but any, you see any roadblocks or any speed bumps along the way?
Well, we had one roadblock yesterday where they didn't have quorum to gavel into the House. Not, don't want to put any sort of bad vibes out there on that, taking us back to 2021. But that was one issue, obviously, with some of those. There was a very acrimonious debate on the issue of the illegal entry bill. That's over in the Senate now, and obviously they have more, I would say more felicitous discussions over there, so to speak. But that being said is, yeah, that debate took a long time on the floor. There was definitely a lot of political bloodshed. But even so, even so, the fact that these things are moving, I think, shows a fairly solid understanding that these are in the best interest of the state. Now, obviously, things like SB1, SB2, the House put out their own version of that, that certainly reflected certain elements in the House. You know, I'm not here to pick that particular bill apart, because even that hasn't been set for a hearing yet. But also SB1 and SB2 have not as well. So hopefully, we can get progress on that going.
You, sir, that is a tremendous segue into who we're here to talk to today, of course. Again, Senator Brandon Creighton is with us from Senate District Four, and I would be remiss to not immediately jump out, since you do represent sort of the suburban and outer areas of Houston. Have you gotten over the ALCS yet? Are we, can we watch the World Series and support our brethren to the north, or is it, are the regional differences just too much?
With counseling and with support from family, I'm making it through game by game. Still sleeping with a nightlight on with my, you know, any thoughts at all of Garcia and his performance during the series, so.
I go back to the bases loaded situations, multiple bases loaded situations. That's what keeps me up at night.
Keeps me up at night as well, and will for some time. But you know, it's good to have a Texas team in the World Series. It's, as an Astros fan, it still stings.
Absolutely. All right. So we'll have to call it maybe multiple special sessions to get over that at some point.
Careful what you put out there now.
Yeah, I know, I know. But we're talking about this special session. We've got a little under two weeks left for this special session. Your legislation, SB1, has already passed the Senate. So I want to, I want to talk just, before we get into specifics, and we've got some breaking news specifically regarding that today. But I just want to talk a little bit about the environment in Texas right now. It seems like every session, we, you know, there's some kind of push, whether it be incremental or otherwise, to get some kind of school choice, some kind of parental empowerment legislation through the legislature, however small or large or whatever. And some of it passes kinda sorta. We've done some SSES and things like that, but never gone the full way. But does it feel different this time around? And if it does, what do you think contributes to that?
Well, it definitely feels consistent at home in the district. You know, talking to families, not just in Southeast Texas, but around the state about their strong support for school choice, and moms and dads having, you know, the opportunity to make the decisions that are best for their kids. And no reason why Texas should be 32nd in the nation to expand school choice and offer these types of options for parents. But we really should be leading on this issue, if any issue. But we could, if we're going to be 32nd, offer something that's best in the nation, best in class. And I'm hoping to eventually get there. So we're working every day to try to bring success.
You hear the Governor talk about that a lot, is that, you know, is it not just that we don't have it, but that we want to have the best program in the nation. And we'll get into some specifics about your legislation. That is very strong. Wanted to just pick at it one more time, just the, you know, a lot of the narrative was that coming out of the pandemic and seeing kind of, you know, literally parents getting to literally see inside of the classrooms has driven a lot of the motivation. Have you, you know, you said it's consistent in your district. Of course, I'm sure the folks back home are, have always been very strongly, just fundamentally in terms of a principle of letting parents decide. But has that driven it at all in terms of the pandemic and coming out of that and seeing what was going on in schools and maybe some of these other issues? You know, like HB900, the explicit material in schools and things like that. Has any of that contributed to sort of this push to get to school choice?
I think there's been just a monumental shift over the past three years on the education landscape, just across the state for expectations for moms and dads, as you mentioned. Certainly COVID and a lot of the awareness gained through the pandemic, you know, that's shined a bright light on the learning gaps, many of the issues that parents just feel like, you know, some of their public schools aren't, you know, just aren't getting there on what their particular child needs. And we see the framework in the bill sort of speaking out to that as a reflection of what, you know, what our parents, what our moms, dads, or guardians, just family at home would like to see different. And we've got open border with the fentanyl crisis. We've got, you know, bullying. We've got woke in the classroom. We've got, you know, 17% of our public school kids performing at grade level. There's just, there's different reasons, special needs and disabilities. There's different reasons why parents really deserve this choice and always did deserve this choice. I mean, the fact that government is arguing back and forth over whether or not parents have, you know, the ability to drive the outcomes for their children and their students' specific needs in education is fascinating to me. It's also fascinating who could really be against it. Yeah.
Well, it's funny you bring that up, because that's something that Brian and I discussed on this, on this very, this very show frequently, is just the clamoring of support that we've seen. And just this morning, another poll dropped, and I don't want to take too much of Brian's thunder, because he's definitely the polling guy here. But they acted broken down, they had it broken down by every single demographic on whether or not parental empowerment was above water or underwater. Demo after demo after demo, you saw it above, to varying degrees, I think, Black Republicans might have been the largest, the largest gap there. But there was only one, there was only one demographic at per this University of Houston poll, only one demographic in which it was underwater, and that was by 10% with white Democrats. Why do you suppose that is?
You know, I couldn't tell you on any specific subgroup on, you know, who opposes and who is, definitely know where families are that are for school choice. And because I'm talking to them day in and day out, and quite frankly, they're a sleeping giant that are, they're going to speak loud and clear either on this now or through the election cycle. But as far as who would come in and oppose, you know, I'm frustrated consistently with how some are standing for certain special interests or institutions. Really, in a lot of these arguments, even in the public hearings, the kids are rarely mentioned.
Yeah, right.
So it's just, when you see any particular subgroup that comes in against, you kind of wonder, you know, who are they fighting for? We've definitely shown a lift for public schools as we continue, not only with funding and support for teachers and safety and reforms that, reforms slash efficiencies that have to be brought in for the public schools. Because, look, school choice, we're working on this framework with scarcity of dollars. It's not going to serve, you know, every, potentially, every application that comes in. So we have to continue this effort on the public school side and with education freedom. And we've seen in other states, that's improved the public schools, and it's improved outcomes for kids, for students.
And you hit the nail on the head, sir. It's that, it's almost like this slavish devotion to the status quo versus wanting to elevate even any subgroup of kids.
Yeah, institutions over students.
Absolutely.
So the poll that you're talking about, that's the big breaking news today. This is the second poll in as many weeks that has shown, the UT poll showed a clear majority in support of all Texans for school choice, for letting all parents decide. This, today, the Hobby Poll out of the University of Houston and Texas Southern University showed plurality 49% to only 27% that opposed it. But I have to point out that the way that they worded the question, of course, is very important. And the way that they talked about it was that they said, "Support or oppose tax-funded school vouchers that can be used to pay for their child to attend a private or religious school?" Now, that about, without calling it, you know, evil, that about is about the most loaded, negative way that you can ask that question. It, of course, doesn't describe what's actually in your bill, which is an education savings account and so on, which I want you to explain in just a second. But even describing it that way, you still get 49%, or sorry, 47% of Texans who support school choice for all parents, 57% of Black Texans support it, a plurality, 40, I guess it's 48% of Hispanics. And by generation, by where you live, and then, of course, parents. They asked parents, you know, of, who have children under 18, 57% to only 17% supported, to support a school choice, even the way that they described it here. So I want to use that as a jumping off point to actually get into your bill to talk about SB1, which I thought it was interesting. They actually asked about SB1. So not just this loaded language. They said, "Do you support or oppose SB1?" And of course, we got 47% that supported SB1, including all the various demographics. So take us through SB1 and the type of ESA. You say you want it to be the best program in the country. Take us through the legislation and tell us exactly what it creates and what it does.
Well, SB1 is consistent with the regular session in some of the framework. And then in other ways, in this special call session, we made some adjustments on moving away from ratings in public schools and how it's tied to the ESA, and moving more towards a sort of holistic framework on who it serves in priority ranking.
Okay.
As applications come in. So $500 million in the budget, $8,000 for the ESA. That's very consistent with the regular session and the time that we spent in January to the end of May in the bills that we sent to the House. The framework starts out with 40% of the framework serves students that qualify for free or reduced lunch. 30% of the framework after that serves, again, lower to middle income. Then you get to 20% of the framework serves children with disabilities, which, by the way, students with special needs or disabilities qualify for every category.
Yeah.
So when you get to that 20th percentile for students with disabilities or special needs, that's just that category, when the first two parts of the framework serve them as well.
So you just nailed like three big things that I want to chop up a little bit for our viewers, because all three of those things push back on some of the most egregious false information that is being put out there by opponents of school choice. So the first one is-
Imagine that.
The first one is, is this is an ESA, not a voucher. A voucher is just cutting a check to a private school. This is an ESA, which means you can do more things with it. It's money in an account, and there are specific uses for it. What are some of the things that you can use an ESA for?
The education savings account, which by the way, has some of the strongest anti-fraud provisions in the country in this legislation as drafted. But the framework will go through the Comptroller, not the Texas Education Agency. And the ESA itself, as you mentioned, the family has some specific ways that either by, whether it be curriculum, or tutoring, or transportation, or clothing specific to uniforms.
So you can customize-
You can.
Right, your education. This isn't just, again, cutting a check to someone. You can be able to use this money in ways that, the tutoring, I think, frankly, is one of the biggest ones, the specialized tutoring. Because even if your kid's going to a good school, you know, and they're getting, you know, they might not be getting all of the attention they, they're not necessarily disabled, but they're not getting all the attention they need. That's going to be a huge thing for parents.
Absolutely. Yeah. I mean, under the mindset that the money, you know, and the funding should follow the student, those are the specific needs that our students have. And I think the growing trend across the country for the use of education savings accounts is specific to exactly the à la carte, you know, related services that can serve the student. And we're looking forward to Texas being next on the list.
The second big one is, you said it's, I mean, there's a budget. We have a budget. You know, you can't just, you know, it's not open-ended, and you're going to spend all this money and bankrupt the state on any program, you know, no matter how important it is. 500 million is currently budgeted for this, which, by our, by my, you know, math, since I was a communications guy, I don't know how much math I have. But by my calculations, that's less than one half of 1% of all the money that we would spend on public education this year, right? That 500 million.
That's true. And it's not really any reference at all to the public education budget. We're lifting up public schools with new funding like never before. And then separate from that, with the surplus money, as we've funding border initiatives and the Texas Electric Grid and healthcare initiatives and CPS and transportation and water and infrastructure, we also have $500 million set aside from that surplus money to serve kids that need it the most and to give parents options. And so, you know, this tie together of how these dollars are competing with public education, yes, you see sort of goofy amendments that take 100% of the surplus and put it in one particular tranche of the budget, which is just, everybody knows that's just funny math.
Yeah, irresponsible.
It would never work. We have these funding initiatives to be responsible stewards of the tax dollar and also handle basic, you know, services that the state of Texas should provide. But, you know, this is an investment in our kids and our kids' education. We're either going to be the number one job creation state for fast food nation, or we're going to have kids that are educated in the ways that they need to be able to enter the workforce and have generational change in their lives and the lives of their family with an education that is customized for them. And this is the bill to get there. If any elected official ever leaves a legacy, I think the average tenure in the Texas House right now is 3.9 years. And if, in this short time that we're all in the House and Senate and able to make a difference, this is the bill.
That's incredibly well said. I almost don't want to go to my third point, but I definitely need to hit it, and then I'll kick it over to you Derek for comments. Is that, well, another important aspect of this, of course, is that they'll say, oh, this just goes to a bunch of rich white kids who are already going to, who are already going to public school. But that's not how, as you mentioned, I don't want to skip over that. That's not how this bill is structured. There's a prioritization for who can access the program initially, right now. Because as you said, not every single child is going to be able to access the program, at least initially, right? So there's a prioritization. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Well, and I would say, we're going to start out with the, not only the greatest and broadest eligibility in the nation, but other than maybe what Florida did last year on their fourth iteration over 25 to plus years of having school choice, we're going to serve the most kids in the nation, maybe only second to them. We'll see how their framework applies. But that's incredible to start at that point, in the way that we're putting the money behind the policy. Because some states have passed the policy, but not really funded it. And other states have put some funding forward, but the framework for the applications is not serving those that need it the most.
That's a great point, yeah.
So we're accomplishing both right out of the gate. And I just think that with 90% of the framework serving those that, you know, come from households with lower incomes, that are trapped in certain ZIP codes and need a fighting chance to succeed with their education in these very important years that they're in, in K through 12. And separately, those that have disabilities that, you know, look, I mean, I've sat with grandparent coalitions with kids and grandkids with autism that just need to be able to get to a school that teaches coping skills. And in the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade years, and their goal is possibly to work their way back to their public high school. So these things can work in harmony. This isn't a decimation of sticks and bricks of public schools. It, all of the, you know, all of the bias and the negative narratives and the fear-based propaganda, it's really, it would make you angry if it didn't make you sad first, because the kids are the ones that lose. Kids in public schools and kids that use ESAs can all succeed.
Derek, your thoughts on SB1?
Oh, well, I think it's obviously a great vessel for accomplishing that, which the Senator laid out. One of the things I would like to ask about it, though, because you mentioned in your closing remarks on the last question, about students succeeding despite ZIP code, despite background. So as you've illustrated, we are not the first mover on this particular policy issue. In fact, we, you know, we are behind a majority of the other states, unless we're counting the 57 states. But, you know, that's an argument for a different time. With that being said, I don't know of any instance in which the sky has fallen, as it's been, as it is predicted, that will happen here. I've been, we've heard, oh, it'll get rid of Friday Night Lights. We've heard that it'll detonate, you know, it'll basically destroy rural life as we know it. All these different lies, I mean, contentions. That being said, what have we seen in those other states in terms of student achievement and success?
Well, you know, through the hearings process, and there's been a lot of talk about the studies that we have relied on. And we've used 187 different empirical studies from across the nation, and 162 of them have been either net neutral or net positive. So most being positive, right? I think only maybe 8% of those success studies were neutral, and many of those were new, new programs. So it's just been incredible what we've seen on the use of these ESAs. And that's why you don't see school choice policies across the country being repealed.
That's right.
Under Republican and Democrat governors, school choice continues to expand. In Florida and Arizona, we've seen public schools improve after school choice has been implemented. And states like Iowa and Arkansas, states like Utah, these, North Carolina, these states that are bringing ESAs forward are just showing exceptional results. And we need to, again, it's a shame that we have to follow them, but we can improve best in class off of what we're seeing with those particular successes.
And you mentioned, you mentioned that we're not seeing it repealed. That's not saying that there aren't certain people that tried. I remember, just want to highlight that the, led by the Chicago Teachers Union, we've seen that the Opportunity Scholarship, which is privately funded in Illinois, they went after that to the point where Governor Pritzker, not exactly a rock-ribbed conservative by any means, actually came out and said, no, we're not doing that, absolutely not. And then obviously, Governor Hobbs in Arizona is, you know, leading her charge, as well as in North Carolina, then do that. But again, the common thread is not that this is an organic ground-up swelter. We need to get rid of this policy idea that never worked. It's all, oh my goodness, there's a constituency whose ox is getting gored, part of that status quo. What can we do in political protection? And that's where I think really illustrates the issue that we talked about. What, are we defending the status quo? Or are we defending students?
Well, Kerry Lake ran so strong on school choice, and I believe Hobbs in Arizona is countering that against the tide on favorable polling. And yes, there's an attack led by teachers' unions from across the country through, you know, certain politicians as their voice. And we're seeing some of that right here in Texas. So we're up against that. It's interesting, Florida has, you know, 67 school districts, one per county. We have over 1,200. And some of those public school voices, unfortunately, for one reason or another, are working against the kids.
I mean, it's really telling that, you know, we have 31 other states that have these programs. They haven't been repealed. And not only have they not been repealed, but most of them grow exponentially, particularly at the very beginning, when people start to see, oh, I can have access to these choices, or I can move my kid here or there, or, you know, get tutoring that I can afford now. I mean, that's, that's the real, that, to me, all the studies are important, for sure. But the one that stands out is none of these states, if school choice is, you know, ruins public school systems or bankrupts public school systems, where has that happened? Nowhere, you know? And these states are not repealing their laws, and in fact, they're going the opposite direction and growing.
Miami-Dade was in a Baltimore or Detroit type of situation prior to school choice coming in. And what has been seen on performance for public schools just in the Miami-Dade area has been a case study, you know, nationally. And we're going to continue to see that across the country. And we'll see it here in Texas once school choice passes.
Nothing short of a miracle, for sure, there. So I want to get to a couple of other issues. I want to, you know, that, some of them are legitimate concerns that I think, you know, even fiscal conservatives, right, might have, or even just people who want to make sure that the money's being used in the right way, or that the program is actually having the results that it's going to have. One of the issues is, is how do you keep the program accountable, right? Like in terms of the money, you know, that you talk about, you know, some of the great fraud protections, maybe you can get into some of that. But also just in general, to make sure that, you know, if a child, if a kid is going to a private school or some other type of institution other than a public school, how can Texans be reassured that that's going to go in the right way and that that child is going to then improve their education? What would, I guess-
Safeguards.
Safeguards, thank you, are in place to make sure that either you, or the TEA, or whoever, the Comptroller, is making sure that the programs are working?
Well, there, and it's a great question, because there's always, again, there are narratives built that this is just a reckless use of funding and public funding, right? Even though in the higher education world, for many, many years, decades, we've been using public funds so that students have a fighting chance to attend a private university.
Right. Pell Grants, right?
And yes, and it's been incredibly successful. And there are, you know, as far as misuse of those funds has just been nonexistent, right? But again, these narratives have to be built. So we have audit provisions that are very extensive in the legislation. The Comptroller will develop the framework, and those audits are rolling audits to where they will be consistent and comprehensive. If there's some sort of a mishap by a provider, that will be caught and dealt with. Obviously, in any use of funds, you have to have an audit trail, and you have to have transparency. You have to have reporting, and you have to have accountability. And that will not only apply to the receiving provider, but also to the family itself. So.
I looked into, it's funny you bring up Pell Grants, because I looked into it for a column I was writing, just to make that kind of point. And I was just curious, you know, how big is this, you know? how mu, how big is this, you know, Pell Grants? $25 billion a year in public money, right, that can go to private or religious institutions. Nobody's trying to repeal that program. It's been around for 50 years. And in fact, in 2022, they just increased the maximum allotment for the Pell Grant by $500 and was signed by President Biden. And I think he actually mentioned that and bragged about the fact that he was increasing Pell Grants. So it's, it shouldn't be a, this, this issue of public money for private stuff is not a partisan issue. It just seems to pop up in this one little area of K through 12 education, right? And it's, and it's, and, you know, Medicare, Medicaid, GI Bill, you know, all of these things are public money for, for, that can be used for private uses, but, you know.
It's weaponized for fear-based results, time and time again, even in the public hearings. Senator Phil King made some great remarks in the last public hearing about exactly that. And we've just seen incredible successes in, in, in the use of those Pell Grants, right? And so we have the protections and safeguards in place for the public to be able to rely on a responsible use of these funds and audit provisions in place where the ESA is immediately suspended if there's, if there's some, something that, that trips within the audit to where further investigation needs to, to, to happen. But we're, we're just, we're, we're, we're seeing these narratives manufactured to create enough fear to just pause, hold back, and, and wait till later on this policy. And the only individuals that are hurt by that are the kids that are the most vulnerable across the state that need help the most. And with what we saw through COVID, they don't need help next year. They need help immediately.
And I mean, those kids have been waiting too long already. I mean, there's generations of kids that waited too long because we didn't have it. One other legitimate issue, I think, to, to bring up is of course, testing. That's a big one that, that people say, well, you know, public schools have to, everybody has to take a STAR test. Private schools don't have to take the STAR test. That's not the whole story. What, what is the accountability? What is the, how does the testing work in terms of, of ESAs?
Private schools rely on norm reference testing. It, it's fascinating to me that anyone in the public school world would take issue with norm reference testing, or those that are only public school advocates that have been working for years to get rid of the STAR test would somehow, as they've worked so hard to repeal it, revise it, or, or abolish it, they would attempt now to impose it on private schools. That's just fascinating logic to me on the deductive reasoning there. But norm reference testing, it, it's not only been okay, it's been successful and, and incredibly effective for our private schools for so many decades now. And for those in the public school world that have an issue with it, then they're going to have to take issue with all of those public school kids relying on the SAT and the ACT, because those are norm reference tests.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, and just for our listeners, norm reference test probably doesn't mean a lot to people. Basically, it's just a test that they take, obviously, to measure their progress, but then that progress is then measured against the same cohort of students across the country. So there, there is a comparison there, and there is data to demonstrate that they've made progress. I mean, it's, it's testing. It's just like any other kind of test, like the SAT.
Just as the SAT and ACT works, right? And just as our universities have been relying on for so long now on the performance of these kids as they apply to college and to the next level. And so again, it's fascinating to me on, on, on how certain narratives are manufactured to defeat this policy, but.
And I know I've got, I've got listeners out there that are going to yell at me and say, why didn't you say the parents? What about the parents? Right, that's the ultimate accountability, right? If your hard-earned money is going to these schools and you're choosing to send your, your child there, you're going to be the first person to know if they're progressing or if they're not. And then you can then hold the school accountable, either by going to the school and seeing, you know, what can be worked out, or choosing a different private school to send them to. That's the ultimate in accountability, right?
Parents and families should always be first for, for, for politicians to be even talking about what rights they should have. To be able to drive outcomes for their kids is, is just incredible to me, especially in Texas. But second to that, for a parent, a mom or dad or a guardian to say, you know, what's going on in my particular public school is not working for, for my child. So I'm going to move my child with the help of an ESA to a private school or a homeschool setting. For, for someone to say after that, that the heavy hand of government could somehow be a better armchair quarterback on that decision, or to imply that once that move took place, that the mom or dad would not continue to make sure that the private school experience was exactly right for their student. And instead, that government or institutions could do a better job at that? That is just incredible that those that are elected would even take the risk of going before an audience after we leave Austin, go back home and stand before all those parents and say that somehow we would know better than they would on these particular safeguards for their child. It's fascinating to me. But I feel like we're without a doubt on the right side of this, and I'm hoping that our colleagues that have had pause or reservations on the policy in the past will open their hearts and minds to look at this from a, a brand-new lens and just sort of start fresh, doing their own research and not listening to particular negative stakeholders that are driving a certain outcome that's not good for students. And that, at the end of the day, we'll get there with the vote and be successful so that we can get this policy moving forward for Texas.
Derek, do you have a favorite, uh, false claim that you want to bring up?
I'll say, you, you pierced, you pierced so many of them. I think the, I think the biggest one, and I think the one, and you know, I, I think that we've, we always engage in a good-faith discussion here of, you know, steel-manning arguments, you know, going with the best version of whatever an opposition point might be. And, and I do think that the one that I saw, which you already addressed, is the issue of the funding, because that's something that we saw come out of Arizona. They said, oh, this, this program, the estimates have absolutely exploded. Now, unsaid in that, unsaid in that is, no, the estimates are, are the estimates underestimated how many applications they would have because of the rabid popularity of the program. And, and so, and so just to see people trying to judge like, oh, this'll bankrupt us. It's like, well, you're still the legislature. You still manage the growth of the program. But the fact that you're getting this price signal through the actual application rate is something that I think kind of goes for.
It's like the, it's like the iPhone store running out of iPhones and then saying, oh no, we need to stop making iPhones. Like, what? And in any other context, it wouldn't make any sense.
But one thing I want to, and because we would be remiss, because you've been very generous with your time, sir. We would be remiss if we also didn't know, recognize you for your leadership on the Higher Ed Committee as well. And I think that two of the more contentious bills, SB 17, SB 18, that went through during the regular session, if we have not seen in the last three weeks, the, the very necessity of those bills, I, I, the individuals would just have not to be looking. For SB, for the listeners, SB 17 was the elimination of DEI programs, SB 18 being the tenure review.
That's right.
And just, what was it? I, I saw the story yesterday. I saw the story yesterday at UT Arlington, in which the Chair of a Political Science Department had a very agnostic discussion about the issue going on in, you know, with Israel and, and at the Gaza Strip. And of course, during this conversation, they referred to some of the acts of Hamas, which is a, you know, a US-identified terrorist organization, as well as everywhere else in the world. And who on October 7th obviously performed heinous acts that we don't need to enumerate here. He referred to them in opening statements as, as a terrorist group, which is a factually accurate statement. That almost immediately started shouts, you know, the thought crimes were completely unbearable at that point. Shouted the chair down to the point where his future, he had an event on the Supreme Court coming up, another discussion. That was canceled. He was required by the university to have preclearance for any event. In other words, where he would actually send any opening remarks to the university. This is UT Arlington. And then he ended up resigning as Chair. If that doesn't prove the actual institutional rot that we have going on in our higher education system, I don't know what does. Luckily, though, SB 17, SB 18, that's starting to push back on that particular trend.
DEI and tenure were cornerstones of higher ed reforms that we had been working on, leading into the Senate Education Committee being combined, higher ed and public ed together, along with a workforce component. And so as a rookie Senate Education Chair for K through 12, I, I had brought in many reforms for public schools. Curriculum was one of them, high-quality instruction material curriculum. And, and on the higher ed side, many reforms to the budget, also to, obviously, the tenure framework. And for DEI, which I, I think that debate surprised many on what was going on within those DEI units and how it had been weaponized against other vulnerable populations and certainly against any professor that's applying that would not sign the leftist Marxist political oath. Basically, a neon sign above all universities in Texas saying, need not apply here if you are moderate to conservative.
And I think that rolls right into the, the package, frankly, of parental empowerment legislation that you all passed, particularly in the Senate this year, you know, because that's parents too. Parents sending their kids and a lot of their money over, you know, and handing them over to these Marxists. And, and not just the, not just the, the folks who are there, but the pressure, you know, the peer pressure to conform to a particular viewpoint. I mean, that's, that's the opposite of what you're supposed to be doing in college. But again, it was, it was, it was part of that parent empowerment push, I think.
I hope that we get everything accomplished in this special session, but if we do not, and we extend into another 30-day special, I, I really hope that the parental rights bill, as, you know, we brought it forward in the Senate, Senate Bill 8 during the regular session, would be added to the call, because I, I just think that this moment in time for education reform and as we're bringing school choice forward, that those provisions in that bill, parents really deserve to not wait another interim.
That's right. We, we talked about it here in terms of transparency, quality of education, respect for parents and the partnership with the schools, and then ultimately the choice to be able to decide what's best for your child. That's the package of, of reforms.
And the transparency and grievance process and rights related to that, for parents that don't get approved for an ESA and that will be staying in their public school, or that just choose to stay in their public school, which many, most of them will. Those provisions are so important for, for our parents to have, and we, we should expect nothing less as lawmakers to, to deliver those.
Absolutely. Now, you've talked a lot about your constituents and what you're hearing back home. We have a lot of folks who watch this show who are the activists, who are the people who are, you know, want the inside information. How do I get, you know, how do I know what's going on so that I can act at the right time and do all of that? What has been your, well, two questions. What has been the response really from the outside in terms of SB 1 and kind of what you're hearing? Not just at home and, and whatever, but also there have been some, you know, activist, active, active events. You know, there's been marches. There's been, you know, door knocking on for the, on senators' doors and things like that. And certainly phone calls and things like that coming into the offices. How much has that impacted the debate as well?
It's had a tremendous impact. Our, our activists at home and, and the grassroots and those that have really been in the trenches for years on school choice. I mean, they're so close to, to victory. We're, we're very, very close on where we need to be. And of course, we're, we're going to have to negotiate details when the House produces a bill, and, but that's not unusual. That's not unusual for us to go to conference between the House and the Senate and to work out those specifics. And if we need another 30-day session, so be it. I mean, the kids, who else would be more worth, you know, continuing to push forward than, than these students that need help the most? So some of the questions are always policy-driven, and they're always about specifics in the bill itself. For instance, the Senate bill is fully universal. So only if applications exceed available funding do we go to a framework. And we don't know how many applications are going to come in.
Right.
And half a billion dollars is an incredible start. I don't know of another state in America that started there. So with that, if applications do exceed available funding, I tell the grassroots and those that are calling in that this framework that we have in place is the most responsible way to start. I think Florida was special needs and income-based, I think, for the first 24 years that they had school choice. So we're going to, we're going to have that framework in place if we need the framework. But homeschool is also included. And there's been a split in the homeschool families on whether or not they wanted to be included in the ESA, and that's because they don't want any strings. And I'm going to work hard to make sure they and private schools don't receive any strings related to this policy. But for a reduced number, $1,000 instead of $8,000, that is the ESA that they would be eligible for. I mention any of that because of you asking, what questions am I getting from the grassroots? And those are some key questions.
Absolutely. Well, and then getting to the grassroots, and this will be a lot, do you have one more? Because we're about to wrap it up. I do want to give, give an opportunity to, you know, talk to the grassroots, tell them how they can, they can get involved here, because, you know, even though we have, you know, a few days left of the, of the special session, there's still going to be a process. The House is going to produce a bill. I'm guessing it's not going to look exactly like SB 1. It'll have to go to conference. So there's still a lot of inflection points, a lot of, a lot of debate and discussion that's going to happen before we get a bill finally to the governor's desk. And so there's opportunities there for activists, you know, who are, who are wanting to weigh in on this right now. A lot of opportunity over the next 10 and 10 or so days. So what would be the best way, you know, that'll be helpful, you know, from your perspective for folks to weigh in and support?
You know, calls and emails, you know, old-fashioned letters, visits, those still matter at the state Capitol in Texas. Washington DC, you know, I'm not sure that John or Mary Smith from Texas can even testify on a bill anymore unless they're invited, which is just incredible. But here it matters. Sending an email to your state representative or state senator about your child's specific education needs and why school choice is important to you, with a lot of persuasion, but much in the civility category, you know? Be constructive in your email and in your, or in your phone call or your outreach. Those contacts, those points of contact, they matter. So contacting your particular state representative and state senator until we get this policy done is so important. I would ask everyone to, to do exactly that.
Well, we will close it right there. That's a great, we, we try to end on a positive note. We talk about so many things that are wrong with the, the state and things we want to fix. It's always great to, to end on a, on a positive note. Again, thank you so much for your time. I know you're incredibly busy with everything going on, coming to the end of the special session. So we really appreciate you coming and, and talking through this issue with us. Again, we've been visiting with Senator Brandon Creighton of SD 4. We really, really appreciate you being here. Thanks so much.
It's great to be here with you, and thanks for all that you're doing to promote awareness and success for school choice in Texas. And I'll look forward to coming back.
Awesome. All right. Well, that'll wrap it up for our show. Again, we really appreciate all of our listeners and all of our viewers. And, and again, if you can, if you're still not signed up for our various products, we have a lot of ways to, to get in touch with you. This isn't the only podcast that we produce here. I think we have like a dozen podcasts now. I'm not sure. We just launched a new one last week that actually talks about how they do what they do at the Capitol. The first, the first episode is called Come to Order. The first episode is actually about special sessions. Like, what's the difference between a special session and a regular session? So we're trying to continue to inform the public and, and love your ideas and your, your show topics and your feedback as well. Of course, you can find Derek and I and Senator Creighton on, on Twitter and the various social media and get in touch with us that way. So thank you for listening. Thank you for watching. And as Sam Houston said, do good and risk the consequences. We'll see you next time.